Well, I mean, it's it's it'll be on the record eventually. Just I was talking with Councilman Surtik about pricing for basketball court restorations and got some good news on that. That's going to keep the costs down in the future. So they're prohibitive costs if we were going to start from scratch, but they're restorable and don't need to be replaced. So we have a lot of money that will be able to stretch a lot further.
So like coating coating over the old ones?
Yes, they said that they weren't in a state of disrepair, that they could be salvaged in the spots that we had them target. So we'll be able to get more bang for our buck.
Oh, good. You guys are on.
We're on, no G?
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome the public, the council members and various department heads to our regular council meeting from Monday, December 20th, 2021. Our caucus portion, which usually begins about 6:30, to be followed directly by our regular council meeting. To that end, a question to our city clerk, are there any communications or hearings from citizens?
None received.
Thank you. The next item approval of minutes and departmental reports administrative. Our next communication is from First Word Councilman Ingram. Councilman Ingram, you have the floor. You want to discuss the issues that you raised your concerns about?
Yes. And for the last couple of weeks, last week, couple of weeks before that, even during the summer, the NFTA buses have not been running as they're supposed to. Sometimes they don't even show up. I made a call, talked to a couple of commissioners because we can't have that. We have people waiting for the buses and they're not showing. You know, I understand things happen, sometimes break down, whatever, but this was a little too too regular. Every other one day they'll show or for one shift where they won't come to the other. Or the next day they come so late that the people can't catch the can't catch the connecting thing, connecting bus. So I spoke out to the, I reached out to the NFTA and I told them I was going to reach out to talk to the council. But we don't want to go through what we went through before we were able to get the buses where people had to walk, walk across the bridge, walk over, whatever. So they're supposed to be getting back to me, back to me about this situation. Because it's very important, especially with the weather changing, getting colder. We have a lot of people that depend on those buses. And if you're not coming, if you're supposed to be there nine something, you don't come. You know, we have an elderly person out there or I myself in this bus that we show. So hopefully I have an answer for by them by next week or something.
So Councilman, as far as that portion of your communication, is there something you're looking for from the city council? Do you want to wait for a response from?
I want to wait for a response and see and make sure that, and if they don't give us the property, we need to be a little more forward to make sure that we take care of the situation as much as we can.
Okay, very good. Next.
My next, the next one is about the lights on Wilkes-Barre, right by where the apartment complex is. They're out and they were wondering when can they, how do they get them back on? Do they, is it the city job or is they put the call national grid who? You know, they need the light back on because they said there's a lot of activity in back and you know, it's very dark.
John, is that, John, sorry to interrupt you. Is that on the private property or is that on the street?
It's on the street.
Bridge Road?
Yeah, it's on the on Wilkes-Barre Street.
Well, anyone can call in a street light that's out. All you have to do is go to the street, write down a street name, and then the number on the pole, and then go to our website. And at the very bottom, there's a spot for a streetlights that are out. And then they have, once, once they're identified, once national grids identify that these streetlights are out, and they shouldn't be because they're brand new, but there are some out. Then they they stop billing us until they fix it. Now, firstly, I have a conspiracy theory that there's always at least 10% of our lights out. And there's, like I said, there's no reason for brand new lights to not be working right now, but some are. And I think once they fix a few, a few more go out. That's just my personal opinion.
That was the question is the fence behind there. That's our fence. We, they were asking the rhythm over there and when the on the barb shop owner wanted to know if the city going to replace that fence. Look horrible, got a lot of trash and stuff behind it, whatever. And then, you know.
Is that way in the back?
Way in the back.
I don't think that's ours.
Tony DeSantis, are you aware of this? Do you know if that's a city owned fence?
Their fence has been there for a long time. I couldn't even tell you whose fence it really is. Because that property was developed, I don't remember what the last business was there. Could have been put up by when that property was running before everything was knocked down. So I really don't know whose fence it is. And anyways, what John's talking about, our property behind there, that area is going to be, it's targeted for a training site for the fire department, which should happen. Mr. Fino got funding for that within the next 18 months or so. So it's a possibility that they might have some kind of fencing put up there at that time.
So we don't know. So right now it's not, we don't know if it's how it can get taken care of at all, right?
Do you know what's?
If it's not our property, we can't replace it. And as Tony said, if that fence was there since before the Friendship House, who knows whose property it is? We have to do an assessment at our cost survey. And, you know, if there is a plan with the fire department for training, then perhaps a new fence is concluded in the training costs that was accumulated. But it's not going to happen overnight, John.
Oh, no, they're not. They just asked about it because they want to know if it's the city's fence and whatever.
Yeah.
They want to, if they want to put a fence up, you know, they have every right to, to take a go ahead and put.
What they're asking is if the city thinks, because of the way it looks, if you haven't walked back, I have, they look bad and whatever. They want to know if the city says they, is the city going to fix it? That's all they want to know.
Well, we could take a, we could take a ride back there and see what it looks like. If it needs a little bit of mending. I don't see nothing. I'm sure we could handle that.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next communication is from Second Word Councilman Simansky. Councilman Simansky, you have the floor.
Yeah, this is just some, some signs that I've been collecting notes for since I was doing a census last year. And since this is my last meeting, I guess most of my signs are collected here. And I submitted it. There's just some that are just either missing, misspelled, faded, damaged, bent, or to be added. Some of them, like I think it's either, I think it's Tracy off of Electric. There's someone named Tracy probably had someone, you know, take it. And so now there's no sign. So if someone's trying to have food delivered, the person who's not familiar with the area doesn't know it exists or doesn't know where to go. Some like Fremont are just misspelled. It's Fremont's with one E, not two. Others were bent like I think Edgewood, someone just bent them and they looked pretty bad. And other ones are just stop signs that are just so faded. You know, there was one near Teddy Casnick's place on Oak Card. It wasn't a stop sign. It was a no parking here to corner. I literally had to walk underneath it and kind of read the etching of the old lettering to see what it actually read. It was literally just white on white. And that's just, it's nothing major. It's just that, you know, it's quality of life issues. And, you know, some of them are, you know, grape off of Franklin. There's certain letters that are missing. I mean, it doesn't spell rape, but it doesn't spell grape either. So you want some kind of, you know, corrective action. And I just, I'm just identifying things that are there. One of them I didn't put on there was on Pierce in Roland, the stop sign on Pierce is really faded and looks really lousy. But I just submitted some just for, you know, the next councilman to take credit for. But I just figured it's time that we identify the signs that are gone or bent or misspelled or or very badly used. I mean, let's just face it, some of them are just, they've been around for 50 years and things happen. So that's, that's all. Just identifying some second word signs.
All right, thank you. We'll refer that to Mr. DeSantis, Commissioner DPW for follow up. You have also the next item, number seven, Councilman Simansky.
Yeah, right after we did, so we had an item that was tabled and then we brought it off the table the next meeting. And then we voted for it only to find out that the day after we voted for it, there was information that was clocked in or submitted on to the National Institute of Health dot gov website that says that what we just voted for could be incredibly damaging to human beings. And I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's a 29 page scientific paper written by two doctors and referencing 141 other studies that says the same thing. That 5G is terrible for human beings and should not be and shouldn't even be used for warfare because it could be considered a possible crimes of genocide due to the long-term effects that can come from 5G radiation. So I'm not going to read the whole thing. I will read the conclusion of their 29 page paper. It's only about four paragraphs here. There is substantial overlap in pathology between COVID-19 and wireless communication radiation exposure. The evidence presented here indicates that mechanisms involved in the clinical progression of COVID-19 could also be generated according to experimental data by wireless communication radiation exposure. Therefore, we propose a link between adverse bioeffects of wireless communication radiation exposure from wireless devices and COVID-19. So there's all different kinds of illnesses, organ damage, ability for humans to absorb oxygen, which, you know, it says our bodies are 70% water. There's plenty of oxygen in our bodies. But the final sent, the final paragraph says it all, which is why I brought it on here. Wireless communication radiation exposure is a widespread yet often neglected environmental stressor that can produce a wide range of adverse bioeffects. For decades, independent research scientists worldwide have emphasized the health risks and cumulative damage caused by wireless communication radiation. The evidence presented here is consistent with the large body of established research. Healthcare workers and policymakers should consider wireless communication radiation a potential toxic environmental stressor. Methods for reducing wireless communication radiation exposure should be provided to all patients and to the general population. Now mentions policymakers. We are policymakers. And I know we voted for it. I know there are some federal rulings that says we can't stop it. But I would like to see that we would like to make an effort to try to stand up to what's being forced on us, which if it's going to possibly affect not just this generation, but generations to come. Specifically, if the radiation is that strong, I'll give you an example of how this can have incredibly long-term effects. Females are born with approximately 1 million eggs. By the time puberty rolls around, about 300,000 remain. And of those, about 300 to 400 will be ovulated during a woman's reproduction lifetime. If the woman, if the little girl has received radiation that can be damaging to her eggs, then that will have long-term reproduction problems for generations to come. And I think now we have the ability to recognize that the study is not off of a conspiracy website. It is not off of Infowars.com or Rents.com. It is off of the National Institute of Health dot gov's website. And it was a warning to everybody that we should do exactly what we didn't do, which is to not allow this in our community. I don't know, Rhino Rick submitted something. I haven't had time to read it because I've been running around all day. But if we have the ability to reverse that vote and say we are not interested in having this poison throughout our community, then I think now is the time to take that stance.
Thank you, Councilman Simansky. Just off the top of my head, having looked at this briefly, we did pass the resolution. If Mayor I follow sign the contract, we could be in breach if we decide to try to rescind it at this point. I'll ask Rick Judah, our city attorney, in a minute for his opinion. But in addressing the problem, Mr. Judah did do some research. And if I read it and understood it correctly, we are jurisdiction, jurisdictionally prohibited from preventing this type of wireless system from going in. If the, if the, if the entity meets the federal standards, which could be argued that, or they're going to argue that they do meet. The only thing, and I think your, your efforts, Councilman Simansky, are to be applauded. Maybe the best we can hope for is, is a letter from us as a council to go to the wireless entity expressing our concerns and asking them to address our concerns accordingly. Mr. Judah, I see you're present. Is there anything you want to add to this conversation?
So, you know, the limited research I did was, was done today. Although I was familiar with the telecommunications act, which does place the regulatory authority in 5G networks and 4G networks with the FCC. And I was also familiar with the statute that Rich Stanton pointed out after Jeff put this on the agenda, which basically tells us that a legislative body cannot refuse to enter into an agreement solely on the basis of a concern over radio wave frequency. But with that being said, I did try to reach out to Verizon today to see what they have to say about it. And I will continue to reach out to them. However, the the woman that I was dealing with is out on maternity leave. And the individual that she has referred her calls to in her absence is on vacation. So, once I, once I do get in touch with someone at Verizon, I will make it a point to see what they have to say, not only in terms of, of the level of radio wave frequency, I'll call it, that the 5G network produces within our city, but also with respect to how they've handled this with other communities. Councilor, Council President, you're correct. We did sign a contract. It has been signed by Verizon and it's, and it was approved by the council. There's a procedure where the aggrieved could make a claim through the FCC or through the courts. So I think we'd be hard pressed to defend it if the sole reason is based on radio wave frequency. But let me see what they have to say. I'm guessing that they're going to come back and say that the level of frequency that this system is going to generate throughout the city is going to be no greater than what's currently being produced with a 4G system. Again, my limited research is showing that there are a couple of areas where there's larger transformers, which may produce a little bit more radio wave frequencies or a higher level of frequencies. And I will attempt to find out from Verizon where that's going to be located. Again, before they do anything, they do have to get site plan approval from us. So we will be in a position to, to discuss this with them further as they submit a plan to develop the system in the city.
Thanks so much, Rick.
So I guess with that being said, Mr. Mr. President, I think we have some time to talk to them further before we decide to take any, any legislative action.
Thank you, Rick. And Councilman Simansky, would you be satisfied with a receiving file and a forward for further follow-up and opinion with the law department on your request?
Well, I wanted to say thanks to Rick for looking that up and for Rich to help with the assistance on some of the clarity on it. I will say this, there is a difference between radio waves and microwaves. And 5G is apparently looking to be 60 gigahertz, which can be even considered military-grade weaponized systems. So I would think we would need clarification on regarding whether it's radio waves, which the FCC says we can't stop versus microwaves, which we might be able to if it's not labeled in it. That being stated, I would like to see a letter in consideration with what the city attorney said. I would like to see a letter, not just go to the communications company, but also to the FCC and to the governor with our concerns regarding this study. Again, the study was backed up with 141 other scientific papers. And as everyone's running around crying trust, trust of science, well, here's science. And the science says you don't want this in your community. So I will do a receiving file. I'm not going to be on the council in 11 more days. So I would hope that the integrity of the city council continues with this fight, which I believe is the right one for our residents. Because our people are worth it. The government, I will just say this. The government doesn't exactly have a great track record of working with its citizens. Whether it was the 40-year Tuskegee syphilis study in which they, they've, without even recognizing who they gave it to, they gave black men for 40 years syphilis in the study, the results. And of course, then President Clinton had to apologize for their, for their testing on their residents. Obviously, you know, Dean, you're Vietnam veteran, but in Vietnam, they used Agent Orange on the enemy, on the environment, and also on our own soldiers with a nominal apology, but you know, it didn't do enough. And if you don't want to go overseas for seeing some of the problems that our government worked on, just look at our own backyard when they were, they were bringing in uranium for fat man, a little boy, the two bombs they dropped on Japan, in which our fathers and grandfathers are dying of cancers. And all they did was give everyone a $50,000 check to go away. So I don't think the government exactly is in good standing for, for trust. But I will recognize that the city council would like to move forward with this meeting. And if we can forward a letter to the FCC and to the governor with our concerns, I would greatly appreciate that. And I wish the council all the best in this fight because I think it's important.
Thank you, Councilman.
Can I chime in here, Mr. Council President, real quick, just a clarification?
I gotta interrupt you. My phone is dying. I will be logging on in my laptop in less than five minutes if I do lose you, okay?
All right, thank you, Rick.
Sorry.
Councilman Simansky, so you want a letter, you're okay with the receiving file, refer to the law department for an opinion, but you also want a letter sent to the FCC and you said the government, who specifically?
No, the governor.
The governor. Okay, I'm sorry. All right. All right. So I will put that in there.
And if you could forward the whole 29-page study to both, just so they can understand the reference of the National Institute of Health dot gov's own link. That would be great.
I can do that.
Thank you. And I appreciate the council's understanding. Again, this is very important. This is very long-term effects. And I just want to say thank you for your consideration on this.
Thank you for your efforts. Well done and a very great concern to a lot of people, especially in our community. And we thank you for your concern, your continued concern for our citizens. We will follow up on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next item is number eight. City clerk requests city council reappoint Tammy Nicholson being senior bingo inspector. Any, anyone have any comments on that?
I thought we just did this.
I don't believe this was on this particular item, this person, right? We filled the third vacancy, didn't we?
We filled the third vacancy. This is, this is for a vacancy or this is for an upcoming vacancy. It's not the same.
Oh, okay.
And it's a reappointment.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else?
Time flies.
Tell me. Item number nine, city clerk submits a resolution authorizing city council to extend remote Zoom meeting format through January 15th, 2022. Anyone wish to be heard on that?
I had a conversation with the councilman-elect, the great Carl Anderson, and I asked him if he wanted to have me vote. It's not really fair that I, I'm voting for the next council. It's only for one meeting, which is the reorg. And I just said, listen, Carl, I'm not going to be there. However you want me to vote for you is how I'm going to vote because I'm like, it's for you. And he said, he would prefer to have at least the reorg meeting in person because you're only sworn in and elected in your first council meeting once. And so I said, if that's how you wish, then that's all about. Anything after that, if you guys decide not to have it at the chambers or in the senior center, but then go over. But I told Carl, and he wants to have an in-person meeting because it's his first meeting. And I I would agree.
Thank you, Councilman Simansky. Councilman Surtik, we haven't heard from you. You have a position on this?
Yes, I, I emailed you gentlemen and a couple, about a week ago about it. And I, I was leaning the same way. I, I think the reason we ended it at the end of the year a few months ago was so that we could have a live first meeting, reorg meeting. And I was leaning that way and I had a couple other arguments. We have two new members that should be able to vote on it. I was thinking that we'd we'd have the live in-person meeting and then I'll, I'll put it on the agenda for the reorg meeting to to go back to Zoom if we have to. We'll see how the health situation is. And our two new members will have an input on what we're doing going forward. That's, that was my argument.
And, and a substantial one too. Thank you, Councilman Surtik. Councilman Moretti or Councilman Ingram, any position on this?
I agree with that. I would agree with what Jeff and Kevin said. If they first, the other two council, new council people, I think that it's very important that they have the first meeting live in person.
Yeah, I, I agree too. I think being in person and being a such of an important position for them, first timers. So yeah, I agree 100%.
Where do you guys think they should hold it? Should it be in the chambers or the senior center?
Well, in the chambers, I mean, we all mask up coming into the city hall anyways, you know, and I think it would be fine. I would suspect that as long as everybody's vaccinated, that should be no problem. And if you're not vaccinated, maybe you could show up in reserve or on Zoom or something to that effect. But, you know.
I don't know how that could be enforced for the chambers. What I would do is I'm going to ask our city clerk, Jeff Divisquali, to, to check on that and see what, if there are any new restrictions or whether or not the council chambers would be appropriate and, and what steps we would need to take to ensure compliance with whatever restrictions. I know masking is important, but whether or not we have to have someone there to check vaccinations or not, I, I don't know whether that's required. If it is, then we would have to find someone suitable to perform that. So would Jeff, would you look into that and see what rules are out there or requirements or restrictions? And it's not a benefit to us whether it should be the, if the chambers are possible, that I think that would be best. We have to go back to the senior center. It's not as viable a place because of the sound restrictions and sound problems. But if you get back to us with a recommendation, I think we can take it from there.
From what I've understood and that I've read recently is that we're in phase one right now. But if we go to phase two, that many businesses and gathering places are going to be checking to see that you have the vaccination. And if you do, then you can enter and you don't have to wear masks. This is.
Even if they come to the, even if they come to the meeting, don't they have to get checked their temperatures and whatever?
By way of Zoom downstairs, yeah. You come into the building.
Mr. Council President, Kevin Surtik, one other point I mentioned in my email to you guys was that Hamburg has been having meetings. They were on TV a week ago, a week and a half ago, Grand Island, many others. Communities are having in-person meetings. So that's another thing I just wanted to bring up.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on that issue?
Just make sure on my first meeting, I don't get locked up.
Well, you, you're in charge of that and you're in control of that, Councilman, not us. All right, the next item is number 10 from the city controller.
Sorry, Council President. So
Yes.
How, so the, the resolution is authorizing the city council to extend the remote Zoom meeting. So how are we going to phrase this? What are we gonna?
We just receive and file and not act on the resolution.
Okay.
You could do that or you could, you could do that and not make a second. You can not have a second and it would just die. You could do that too. Your choice.
I wasn't sure if the last, if we voted to end at the end of the year and this was an extension into the 15th. Or if we just voted to, I just don't remember how we voted a few weeks ago. We're good.
All right. Again, item number 10 from the city controller advising the council of several retirements. Officer, Police Officer Swicki, Police Officer Paul Fino, and our clerk Linda Schmerka.
Mr. Council President, you know, with 16 years' experience in this government, I, you know, I just want to say this. I know the controller's not in right now. That's understandable. People have obligations and things they have to do. But when I was last on the city council 10 years ago and before, if, if the, the city clerk can take the meeting, then the deputy clerk did. If the, if the controller didn't make the meeting, then the If the, if the controller didn't make the meeting, then the deputy clerk showed up. If the commissioner probably works didn't show up, then a foreman showed up. The only one that can't show up and send someone would be the recreation director. So the fact that we just created an assistant controller position, and there's no assistant controller on this Zoom call, it's not, like again, this is my last meeting, but there should be someone covering for every department. And like, you know, and me and Tony, we had a conversation, Sam, regarding, you know, whether a foreman can actually answer questions for the commissioner. They might not be able to, but at least they can run their questions back the next day or whatever. But so if they can't, if they can't answer, understandable, but there should be some coverage from every department.
And I think we all agree, Councilman Semansky, that we would prefer to have someone here from the department in case there are questions. Based on my knowledge and my conversation with Carolyn, our city controller, this was a last-minute item that came up for them or for her. And in addition to that, she did indicate to me that, and as well as in her email, that should there be a question, we could contact her, and I'm sure she would be available by telephone if the needs be. But in looking at the agenda, I didn't notice anything of great importance that she would have to respond to.
No, I understand, but there should be someone from, there is an assistant controller, and she should be able to fill it. The city attorney has an assistant city attorney. And oftentimes, the assistant would sit in for the unable-to-attend city attorney. So they all have, with the exception of Brian, someone that can sit in. You know, the public safety, the commissioner can have the police and the fire chief sitting here. That's not unusual. That has happened. And I'm just saying for future reference and for future councils, you should have, since we're paying for them, we should have all departments covered. That's just my opinion. But what do I care? What do I know? I'm out of here in 11 days, and I'm now the old guy, so.
The point is taken.
Yeah. And then one more thing, and these people, these retirements, they're two months old. They're, actually, they're a month and a half old. They, we asked for it to be timely, and a month and a half is timely.
Two and a half months.
Okay, does that affect anything, though?
Two and a half months, yeah. Well, it could because of the city council wants to amend the budget based off of attrition and not through layoffs. Then the council should have immediate knowledge of retirements so that they can make decisions. And I'm not trying to tell anyone to start cutting the mayor's budgets. I'm just saying, if you want to do things smartly and you want to start bringing, you know, personnel down, then you should, then you're going to need to know when someone's retiring. And that is really the only purpose why the city council, when I was mayor, put this on the agenda, was so that if they wanted to remove and not have to lay someone off, then it's an easier way of attrition than this, to laying someone off, and it doesn't hurt families. And that's really the purpose of it. It's not, it's not anything vendetta-like. It's based on whether the council can make the adjustments throughout a budget cycle. That's all it is.
And that's noted for our future reference.
Yes.
All right, there's been a request to waive the rules. Do we have any opinions on that or any input on that request?
Yeah, I do. Kevin Sirdike.
You have the floor, Councilman Sirdike.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm against waiving the rules. I was against it at the last meeting. I think, I feel it's being abused by the department heads. It's supposed to be for emergency actions. I don't know what the hurry is on these two items, but I've been on a council for almost five years. Next month, in the first four years, I don't, I can't remember waiving a rule. Now we're doing it every meeting.
And you're right, it's designed for emergency purposes, and lately, that's been ignored.
I'm going to vote no. I mean, I'm against it. I don't, I don't see why we have to keep doing this. Public doesn't have an input on these items, and that's just the way I feel.
I also agree, Mr. Council President, that, you know, to cry wolf during something that's something as important as a taxpayer's money is not warranted. And I think that what's more alarming is I ran into two fire lieutenants today, and they haven't even voted for it. In fact, they haven't even seen it, as far as I know. And they're voting on it next week. So we're going to vote on a contract that wasn't even ratified by the fire union. That's, I don't think it's the proper order of things.
Thank you. Yeah. Anyone else?
My understanding is they're voting on it tomorrow. That's what I was told.
I thought it was presented to them tomorrow, and they had a week to review it.
But they could be.
I don't like, it could be, I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, all right.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then we just have business registration, Mahir Said, EBA, Haliz LLC, Dessert Shop, 954 Ridge Road. All the inspections and paperwork seem to be in order on that. Anyone wish to comment on that application?
Well, being the fastest man in the council, what kind of desserts do they make?
Only good ones, I'm sure.
I hope, I hope.
Let me unmute for the dessert talk here. What have we got going on?
Oh, business, a new business registration.
I'm not muting you. I was just muting me.
Oh, okay.
Director Laxo, welcome to the meeting.
I've been paying close attention, Mr. President. Don't you worry.
He turned his screen off right up. He turned his screen off at the syphilis talk.
Okay.
Council President, yeah, Council President, I had another matter that I had sent down and requested that the council waive the rules on, due to the fact that my assistant city attorney is out on medical leave. And I know it was sent down to Jeff. I don't know whether he got it out to the council.
Yeah, there's, there's two items for the waiver of the rules. One is the appropriation. It's a budget appropriation for the new position. And the second is the approval of the firefighter's contract.
Yes.
Both of those are part of the waiver of the rules. And the tenor of the conversation so far, Rick, is that both of these items could have been placed on the regular agenda and not by virtue of a waiver of the rules, which this council has made vocal that we feel the procedure is being abused. And it puts the onus on the council, then follow up at the last minute on these, on these items that are our last-minute additions to the council agenda. And I think, quite frankly, for lack of a better phrase, everyone's tired of having to do that when there's ample time by department heads to contact the council members, make them aware of what is being proposed, place it on the regular agenda by the time period designated for that. And furthermore, with the intent being that a waiver of the rules is needed only in emergency circumstances, like when there's a grant or a time limitation that we may miss as a result of not being able to get it to a council vote on a timely basis, then we would, of course, entertain a waiver of the rules. But both of these items, the contract for the fire department has been pending for how long? For many years. And Mr., the assistant city attorney in question has been ill for a long time, and you've been in need of an assistant to help in that area for a long time. And I think the resistance is just that waiver of the rules is not a palpable type.
Well, just so the council knows, I may have to cancel Traffic Corp. for the months of January and February because I can't do it myself, and I'm not going to do it myself.
Well, we're not saying.
I don't know when the next count, I think the next council meeting is, is not until January 20th or January 17th, correct?
January 3rd, isn't it?
That's just a reorg. It's the regular business.
We do regular business at the reorg.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that's fine. That'll give you plenty of time. That's what was my concern was. Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else want to be heard on that? Okay, unless there's an objection, we'll move directly into the horrible regular city council meeting for the city council of the city of Lackawanna for Monday, December 20, 2021. I would ask everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Absolutely, Mr. Council President. Ingram?
Here.
Semansky?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Sirdike?
Here.
Here.
Department heads, law?
Here.
Development?
Here.
Public Works?
Here.
Public Safety?
Here.
Controller's been excused. Recreation?
Here.
Public Information?
Here.
All right, as Council President Moreno discussed in caucus, there are no hearings from citizens, so we need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 8, 2021.
Sirdike moves.
Second, Semansky.
I have a motion by Sirdike, second by Semansky, to adopt the minutes of the December 8, 2021 meeting as written. Ingram?
Here, yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0, departmental reports one through four?
Moreno moves to receive and file departmental reports one through four inclusive.
Moretti second.
I have a motion by Moreno, second by Moretti, to receive and file departmental reports one through four. Ingram?
Yeah.
Semansky?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0, communications from the council, number five. Councilmember Ingram requests the city council address the following issues. Issues with the NFTA buses not showing up or showing up late. When will the streetlights at the back of Wilkes-Barre, where the Ridgewood Commons apartments are located, be turned back on? And when will the city repair the fence behind Miracle Barbershop in the Ridgewood Commons Apartments?
File.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion by Moreno, second by Ingram, to receive and file. Councilman Ingram's communication. Ingram?
Yeah.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0, number six, Councilmember Semansky submits a list of second-word signs, street signs, that are missing, faded, misspelled, or damaged. On behalf of his constituents, Councilmember Semansky is requesting that they be replaced or corrected as soon as possible.
I make a motion to receive and file, refer to Department of Public Works Commissioner.
Moretti second.
I have a motion by Semansky, second by Moretti, to receive and file, refer to DPW Commissioner. Ingram? Semansky?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0, number seven, Councilmember Semansky, as per the attached supporting documentation regarding possible environmental issues, request the city council rescind the contract that was approved at the regular council meeting of November 8, 2021, between Small Wireless Communications Facilities and the city of Lackawanna. A complete text of the attached study is available in City Clerk's office.
Well, before I receive a file, and I'm just going over the abstract, which is the first page of this 29-page study. And Rick, just for clarification, you mentioned the word radio waves. I mentioned the word microwaves. They are also, in the abstract, also mention the term millimeter wave. So, and how these can enhance the COVID pandemic. So upon sending these letters to the, to organize, the two entities, the governor and the, which one was that one? FCC. I'd like some clarification on whether just radio waves is what is not permissible to prevent because it also mentions two other types of waves that can be used as detrimental to human health. So with that, I will make a motion to receive a file and refer to the Law Department and to the city clerk to forward our concerns to the governor and the FCC.
Moreno seconds.
We have a motion by Semansky, second by Moreno, to receive and file, refer to the Law Department for an opinion. Included, the city clerk shall send a letter and a copy of the study to the FCC and the governor. Ingram?
Yeah.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0, communications from division department heads, number eight. City clerk requests the city council reappoint Tammy Nicholson, Senior Bingo Inspector, at an annual salary of $1,700 a year, term to expire December 31, 2025.
Move to approve.
Moreno seconds.
Motion by Semansky, second by Moreno, to approve request. Ingram?
Yeah.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0, number nine, city clerk submits a resolution authorizing the city council to extend the remote Zoom meeting format through January 15, 2022.
Moreno moves to receive and file.
Second, Semansky.
I have a motion by Moreno, second by Semansky, to receive and file. Ingram?
Yeah.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0, now you did not stipulate act on resolution. Are we not acting on the resolution?
We are not.
That was not part of my motion.
That's correct. Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yep.
All right, number 10. City Controller advises the city council of the following retirements from city service. Police Officer Daniel Suwicky, effective October 2, 2021. Police Officer Paul Fino, effective October 2, 2021. And Clerk Linda Schmerka, effective October 31, 2021.
Moreno moves to receive and file with the thanks to Officers Suwicky, Fino, and our clerk Linda Schmerka for their service to the city for so many years.
Edall?
Edall is great.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Edall, to receive and file the effective retirements, thanking them for their service to the city. Ingram?
Yeah.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Ram?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0. Mr. Council President, do you wish to entertain waiving of the rules, or shall we vote on that, or how you want to proceed?
Well, as was indicated, I'm going to make a motion to waive. I don't foresee a second. So I would think that the, the attempt to waive the rules will fail.
I'll make a second.
Okay.
So I have a motion by Moreno, second by Semansky, to waive the rules. Ingram?
No.
Semansky?
No.
Moretti?
No.
Sirdike?
No.
Moreno?
No.
Motion failed 5-0. Business registrations, Mahir Said, doing business as Haliz LLC, which is a dessert shop, 954 Ridge Road.
Moreno moves to approve business registration.
Moretti second.
Motion by Moreno, second by Moretti, to approve business registration. Ingram?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Carrie 5-0, Mr. Council President.
Does anyone have any table items or new business they wish to bring up or discuss at this particular time? Who went first?
Let Jeff go first.
I just want to say to everybody, it's been great working with everyone out there. 16 years, minus the six months I was not. But I just want to say the city's in good hands. I think the council, the current council, the next council are very capable people to keep our city moving forward. I wish all them, the department heads, the mayor, all good luck in their future endeavors with our city. Our future is in your hands, and we are in good hands. So with all that, I wish, I'm not saying goodbye because I die harder than Bruce Willis, but just want to say hello and goodbye.
Thank you, Councilmen Semansky. And as far as Councilmen Semansky and Councilmen Ingram are concerned, hopefully I speak for the entire council, and I'd like to say and share the same sentiment that we enjoyed working so much with the both of you. I know you have these cities' interests at heart, and that's all that can be asked of a public servant. So with that, I would like to thank. So with that, I would like to thank both of you for your, your efforts. And, and I'm sure I'm joined by the rest of the council and department heads. Thank you.
No.
Yeah.
Four years or longer, John.
That's why I let you go first.
Okay.
Listen, I just want to say, um, it's been an honor and a privilege to be able to serve the city of Lackawanna, to serve the citizen. Everybody don't get that chance. But those of us who have the opportunity, it was, it was very, it was very rewarding to be able to see so many things we've done in this city. And, and the change way some people perceive Lackawanna. It was a pleasure working with the council. It's a going to be, it's, it's gonna be a pleasure to see the new council working. And to the residents out there that, and the citizens of Lackawanna, we're very lucky to have the council that we have. They work hard. They care about our city. We fight among each other, but we fight for the right reason. And I'd tell you as a, as a citizen, if you got something to say, come to those council meetings. Let it be heard. You know, because you, we, the council worked for you. But the council can only do what you allow them to do. So thank you again to all of you guys that I worked with. And it's a pleasure. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ingram. And, and to that end, and furthermore, thanks to our, our city clerk who put together two very appropriate resolutions. I will read those into the record. The city of Lackawanna distinguished service award to honorable John Ingram. Whereas John Ingram has served this community for many years. First as an active community activist while attending many Lackawanna Municipal Housing Authority meetings, city of Lackawanna council meetings in the last four years as first ward councilman. And whereas these years have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interest of the city of Lackawanna. And he has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural and aesthetic development. And whereas the city of Lackawanna has benefited greatly because of his particular interests and work in the areas of public service. And whereas, through the performance of his duties and responsibilities as a member of the city council, he has made excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our city. And whereas, John Ingram has earned the admiration and high regard of these with whom he has come into contact and his fellow public servants. Now therefore, we as fellow city officials express our sincere appreciation and thanks as well as that of our citizens to John Ingram for his distinguished service to the community. Councilman Ingram, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you. Kevin Surlick, thank you. I didn't know you could, I didn't know you could say no, though. That's the first time you ever said no.
Save the best for last.
Save the best for last, yeah. And of course, for another person of distinguished, distinguished, distinguished member of the council, city of Lackawanna distinguished service award to the honorable Jeffrey M. Samansky. Whereas Jeffrey M. Samansky has served this community for many years. First as a dedicated committeeman, seven plus years during parts of three separate terms as second ward councilman and eight years as mayor. And whereas, these years have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interest of the city of Lackawanna. And he has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural and aesthetic development. And whereas the city of Lackawanna has benefited greatly because of his particular interests and work in the area of public service. And whereas, through the performance of his duties and responsibilities as mayor and member of the city council, he has made excellent and constructive contributions to municipal government in our city. And whereas Jeffrey M. Samansky has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and his fellow public servants. Now therefore, we as fellow elected city officials express our sincere appreciation and thanks as well as that of our citizens to Jeffrey M. Samansky for his distinguished service to the community. Councilman and Mayor Samansky, thank you very much heartfelt.
Well, thank you all, everybody. Thank you so much. It, uh, it really means a lot. And I'll just deflect the attention back to John to say when I was mayor, I can honestly say that there was, even before he was councilman, there was never anyone who was more in my office than John Ingram. So John really does, I mean, Judge, you know, when he was, he was always in your court. You know, when he was in your court, he was in my office. So
Every day.
He was always there. So I listen, I thank you so much. I love the city. That's why I serve. And I just, I wish Carl Anderson and Amira Mufai all the best in their new seats on the city council. And I want to thank Councilman Moretti, Councilman Ingram, Council President Moreno, and obviously my good friend Kevin Surlick, Councilman Surlick, for serving with you. And of course, the city clerk and all the department heads. You're all the best and I wish you all the best in the, in the future. So I do have three people to adjourn in a memory of sadly. And if anyone else does either, by all means, jump in.
Make your motion, Councilman.
I make a motion amend in the memory of Christina Dolan Barton Ford. I make a motion to adjourn in memory of Jimmy Gunner. And I make a motion to adjourn in a memory of Cameron Smith, a young man whose life was tragically struck down far too early.
And I think the second should be Edall.
Council President, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Listen, I just want to personally thank John Ingram and Jeff Samansky for helping me out so much when I got involved in this councilman's job. I don't think I could have did it without their guidance and their professionalism. And again, I want to thank both of you so much for, for helping me be a, a good councilman for, for my third ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Jeff, good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, everybody.
You too, John. Thank you.
Councilman Samansky, I need you to repeat the name slowly, please, so I get this right, so there's no disrespect. I've got Christina.
Do you want it in German or you want it in English or Klingon?
I would prefer in English, please.
Okay, Christina, Christine Dolan Barton Ford.
What's the, what's the last part?
Ford, as in the car.
Okay.
And she, her maiden name is Dolan. She married Barton and then he passed away. And she married Dan Ford. So it's, I'm using all three of her names that she had. So
Was she from Martin Road? Was she from Martin Road originally?
I don't know originally. I know he lived on.
And we've got, we've got Jimmy Gunner and then
Cameron, Cameron Smith. Young man, young father.
Yeah, I heard that. Tragic.
Just terrible.
Okay, I've got it. Thank you. So what I've got is a motion by Samansky, a second by Edall to adjourn the meeting and memory of Christine Dolan Barton Ford, Jimmy Gunner and Cameron Smith. Ingram.
Yeah.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Moreno.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody, to Jeff and John. Good luck to both of you. It was a pleasure working with both of you. John, don't be a stranger. I know you won't. And Jeff, I'm sure I'll get, I, I'm sure I'll get a call here and there.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas.